Okay, Dan.
All right, good morning, everyone. Today's day is Friday, November 15th, 2021. It's 9:30 a.m. So we'll call this work session to order. First item on the agenda is the auditor.
We will have three line item transfers.
Okay.
On Monday.
Right. Is that all?
That's it.
All right. No triage or report. Let's see, next one in line is, I'll go ahead and skip mine and go to Stacy.
Okay, we have the crack seal, the 2021 crack seal project. I think you all are familiar with it. They, we went out for bids and we received one bid and for a total amount of $77,120. And so I'm just recommending that you award the contract for the 2021 crack seal to Little Manufacturing and authorize the judge to sign the contract.
Any questions, Stacy? Okay, we'll vote on that and if it's approved, I'll sign it off. Next up is Carla Blue Wiki.
As you know, I'm Carla Blue, the low wiki can't even see me. I'm the veteran service officer, some of y'all are, you're earned in. And we love our office space, by the way, y'all moving us over there. It's just like yesterday, we think, oh, we've got all this huge space, but then we, if I'm parted with people and we can kind of just spread people out and keep them away from each other and then do a big glass all spray after they leave. And so we've really enjoyed our office space. And with that said, I brought along with me today Charles Pierce. He's the Military Veteran Peer Network and he's with Central Plains, but he works under PBC, Texas Veterans Commission, just like I do. So I work with PBC too. I mean, I'm employed by the county, y'all set this, the position up, and then they tell me what to do. And it's been a learning, what, going on seven years, I think? And we've learned a lot and I get stumped a lot and it's hard being the Lone Ranger. By the way, I finally passed that exam, so I am still fully accredited. It, I, it took me nine times. I was really losing, it make me very sad. I've never failed at an exam in my life and I was, it, it almost did the end, but it was a lot of law. And our, my position goes, they'll tell you that we do the works of attorneys because we do work with judges and, but we're not paid. That's, that's how the state gets around, not paying for all the attorneys is having these positions. So I've had to learn a lot of law. And, but with that said, the Military Veteran Peer Network, which is Charles, I'm going to kind of turn this over to him and let him explain who he is and what he does and how our two offices can pull together. We, we've kind of been testing the grounds for a couple of months and we've been able to far more reach our veterans and instead of me saying, we need to go see Charles Pierce and then he can't ever get over there. He's at Central Plain to go, I'm going over there. And then I also brought Juan Hernandez, which is an Army Marine vet that I've been working with since the beginning. And he's also used Central Plains and I'd like you to hear his input on how great it is if we could pull together and then see my office space. And with that said, I'm going to give it to Charles.
Hope y'all are doing well on this fine day. I don't know who all needs Juan.
Oh, for the minute.
Judge.
All right, thank you.
Just sorry. Do you need one more? Oh, do you want more? Okay. It's just my card showing that I'm the Military Veteran Peer Network in my office over on Houston Street at Central Plains, which as Carla pointed out, a lot of people have negative feelings about because, you know, it's mental health and a lot of people don't want anything to do with, you know, the mental health. They don't want to have to, you know, go to, so they have people thinking that there's something wrong with them. And so through my statement of work, which is the attachment underneath my business card there, it says that for my Military Veteran Peer Network through the Texas Veterans Commission, that one of the things I have to do is have an office outside of what they refer to as the LMHA, which is your local mental health authority, which is Central Plains. And so I've been to several different places and like I went to the Texas Workforce Commission and they said, well, we're on a hiring spree and we're going to be filling all our offices so we can't accommodate you. I've been to a couple of other places and basically told the same thing. So I finally ran up with Carla and told her what was going on. And like she said, we've been doing some experiments and we have found that, you know, I have connections that she doesn't have, you know, in the different VA hospitals. She has connections that I don't have and, you know, and it's working out really well with reaching out to more veterans to help them get what they need through resources and filing for paperwork and getting them signed up through the VA. Some of our stuff does intertwine. What hers, like she said, files claims and stuff like that. Mine is more about the resources and helping file for their discharge paperwork, their C files, which is all their medical and other history paperwork. And through this, we've been able to actually get people in and out faster because when they come to see Carla, I can ask them, well, what is it that you're, you know, needing? It's like, oh, well, okay, well, I can help you with that. Why don't you come in here and let me help you with this? And it's just getting in and out faster and it's been a lot of positive feedback from having this right there together and, you know, because of the stigma's about wanting to go over there and, you know, people thinking that there's something wrong with them or, you know, as one person expressed to me was, if I go over there, I'm not going to get arrested, right? They're not going to throw me in jail or something if I act bad. I was like, no, 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 he's going to do nothing. It's, you know, you're coming in to see somebody to get the help you need, why, why would we do that to you? But, you know, it's just those kinds of stigmas that we're trying to overcome. And, you know, and, you know, and I think it's just a great thing. So I'm asking for a little office space that I could utilize, you know, to assist Carla in helping veterans get the resources they need. Meanwhile, I also have nine counties that I do. I go from Motley all the way to the New Mexico State Line and it's just that whole row of counties, Bailey, Palmer, Castro, all that. And so I'll be here, you know, off and on, but I'm just waiting to get my work vehicle so I can be out in the counties and stuff, helping other veterans and trying to set up some other stuff. But for right now, I would just like to be able to utilize an office space to further help Carla until I can start getting out my counties, then I'll still be here on occasion to assist Carla with veterans and stuff. I'll probably be here, you know, at least a couple of days a week for the most part. And like she pointed out, we did have Juan Hernandez, as she said, a Marine and Army veteran, to kind of speak about his experience by having us both in the same office space.
Okay. Go ahead, Juan.
I'm Juan Hernandez, Army veteran, Marine Corps veteran, Army National Guard, Army City Marine veteran. It's been a lot easier for me to access what I need with claims. Also, there's times where in the past I would not go to MHMR because of the, I don't know what I'm going to encounter there, to be honest with you. When I got there, it flared my spirits up because I don't know what I'm going to encounter, you know? Somebody might come across wrong at me or I might at them and then now, you know, now I'm jetting out of there because I don't want to cause any problems. A lot of us veterans, we don't like going over there because it's bad enough that we already have the stigma of being violent, mentally challenged sometimes, as I've been referred to as a couple of times in the past, crazy, you know, all sorts of stuff.
All right.
You're none of those.
For them to be over here, it may be easier for me. And my family, my daughter recently came to help. You know, my wife comes to Carla. I'm no longer worried about, you know, someone saying, he's insane. It's good. Anyway, my household, we kind of named them the Dynamic Duo because they help us out a lot and it's easier for me to access what I need to get, you know? It's just in my opinion that I'm highly more, highly recommend another veteran to come to this area than MHMR. And they work very well together. Sometimes a message that needs to get relayed from, from Carla to me that she's not able to be in the office at the time, Charles can relay it to me. Or if I have to relay a message, you know, they both work with each other and I get things done. And, you know, since this has been going on, my claims have gotten done faster. Charles helped me find resources the other day because as a disabled veteran, they still don't pay us very well. So I was running on food, so he found resources for me to get food.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Do you have the office?
Over there, it's across from me. I was, we were using it as a waiting room and it did turn out really well. And we kind of shoved him off in that little closet space, but that building, we needed, we moved him across because of the not being able to have privacy. So with him being across, I can shut my doors off and work with my veterans. And then we can communicate with each other without getting out of our chairs, which has been great and because we always toss the keys back and forth. But yes, Deborah is all on board with it. She gets, she works well with Charles and Deborah is also the asset over there too because actually we all work as a team to help our county and our veterans and our indigenous.
Okay. Now, that office has everything it needs? There's a phone and things like that?
He doesn't need a phone. He, all, Central Plain provides all that.
Okay.
So he just basically needed electricity in his desk.
Okay.
And Sylvia DeLuca, not DeLucas, Duquette gave us a office space, a table office desk out of her little building over there and it has worked perfectly. He's minimal.
Okay.
On what he needs.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
All right.
I will be. Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you for allowing me to address you today.
Oh, yeah. Thank y'all for being here.
Good luck to you, Juan.
Thanks for your services.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, let's see. I'll go back up to my items. Petersburg EMS financial and run report for September. I'll go ahead and give those today, so I won't need to on Monday. Their September 21 report, they had three dispatches. Excuse me, two transports, one non-transport, two billable runs for the month. That brings them to, they had total revenue of $3,686.51, total expenses of $8,935.18 for a difference of a negative $5,248.67. So that is the Petersburg run. The next run is the Health Center October run. They had eight transfers, 50 EMS calls, 33 within the city, 18 outside. They had 50 total calls, 19 no transports, 31 billable runs. Let's see here. Okay, they had total income for October of $19,590.92, total expenses of $22,031.41 for a negative $24.40.49. I can't remember that. That seems like a lot of runs.
It does.
So.
For no more than the revenue was, it seemed like a, an awful lot.
So anyway, those are the two reports I have. Also, per Senate Bill 466, counties have to provide a county adult sexual assault response team and we have to name that committee and they have to meet before December 1st of this year. And so I have contacted four of the people. I need to contact one more person and so I'll give those names on, on Monday. I need to confirm with the last person that she wants to be part of that. Now, what I thought we would do, we would go ahead and set out maybe a five-person committee and let them have a meeting and let them get together and decide their bylaws and things like that. And if they want to add people to the committee, then after their first meeting, if they'll bring us those names, I don't, I'm not trying to say we just need a five-person committee, but we're only going to name five to start. Once they meet, they may decide there's other stakeholders in the, in the community that need to be a part of it and we certainly wouldn't want to prohibit them from being part of it. So, but anyway, that's what I'll have on, on Monday is the name of those individuals. The next item, I'll go ahead and cover, I, I thought she was going to be here this morning. Evelyn Carroll had called for the Red Rage Booster Club about acquiring the Ollie Liner Center in May for the PISD Sports Banquet. And, and of course, they want us to waive the fees for that. And so I'll contact her today and see if she can be here Monday. If she can't, I'll get some dates and stuff from her so that we'll have a little more information. I know when my kids were in school, they always had the sports banquet out at the Ollie Liner Center, so I think it's something we've done for quite a few years. The next item is Commissioner Precinct Juan.
We kind of hit on this subject a little bit, popping on for a while, but we need to discuss terminating the contract with Johnson Controls. And my theory is, I mean, when they come do stuff and it seems like it never gets fixed, it's just like kicking a can down the road and then we get these astronomical bills. And the other day they were talking about changing the actuator or whatever that thing is called and they wanted $5,000 to do that. We talked to somebody here.
$5,800.
Yeah, somebody here in town to do it and it was going to cost 800 bucks. And I've said before, I thought this was just a fact years ago when we got rid of it between certain factions. I don't think it was. I think it was the same thing. They're just gouging the government entity. And Jim looked at it, it's up there in my box and I'll bring it to court Monday, but I think we have to give them after Monday, like a 45-day notice or whatever, that we can terminate the contract and move on.
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner King. I don't feel like the county's getting a good value with this contract. I, I wouldn't be opposed in the future of using them on a case-by-case basis if they're interested in that, but as far as the contract, I'd, I'd be in favor of terminating it as well.
Okay. Any other comments or Jesse, you got it?
May I interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
Based on what you're saying there and on that $5,981 bill that they sent us, let me clarify that, the pneumatic actuator had gone bad and I showed you which one it was. So I called them and told them, hey, what would it cost to have it fixed? And they sent me a bid for $5,981, which I presented to y'all last time. I'm not going to defend them or protect them, I'm just going to give you the facts on this one. So I looked at it, go, that is way too high. So I contacted someone else and it was, that I'm going to talk about, $733 to replace that actuator, which sounds ridiculous, the difference in prices. But when I looked at their bid again later, I kept looking at it, there's no way it could be that much difference. And what Johnson Controls did was they actually screwed up for lack of better words. When I asked for a bid on that pneumatic actuator, they actually sent me the bid that they had sent you, Judge, six, nine months ago for, for your pneumatic actuator upstairs in your office. And then they added, and we'll do this and this to the boiler. But that's not what I asked for. So that was their mistake. So I called them back and I said, hey, this is not what I asked for. I sent you a picture, they know where it is, I talked to everyone and they said, okay, we'll get you that bid. And so it's been 10, 12 days and they have yet. I just called them again Monday. I've tried three times, they haven't sent me a revised bid. And their last word was, we're going to have to look at it, we're going to have to come down here next week and look at it to give you an accurate bid.
And they're the ones that told us what was wrong.
And they'll charge mileage. They'll charge mileage.
And I will say that when I, when I had Larry Williams come over, he looked at it and he goes, I don't exactly what, how to fix it without even looking at it. I go, let me show you just in case. Took him downstairs, showed it to him. Within two days, he had that bid for $733. So that's my pitch on, on that $5,000. That was their mistake and I should have caught it earlier, but when I saw replace pneumatic actuator, I go like, that's what they're asking, so stand corrected on that number.
We've had other incidents similar to that. And it's just, it's dealing with Johnson Controls has just been confusing, you know, all the way around for us.
Judge, can I go ahead and touch on, on the rest of the Johnson Controls deal? I'm going to wait till you call on me.
Is that all you had?
Yeah, that's all I have. And like I said, I'll bring you the deal from June 1. It tells us exactly when, from that point on, when we can terminate the contract. You just have to notify.
All right, what about your local agreement?
My, my interlocal agreement.
Just a second, just stay there.
Yeah, that's it. We'll discuss that Monday. But WH Johnson, who is the mayor of Health Center, contacted me a week or so ago. They got a windmill over there in that little park by City Hall that they need to get fixed. And he was asking about the man left that we have out here at the Ollie Liner Center. They need, they need to use it to raise it up so they can get the people up there to fix it. And I told him at that one time that we needed to get with Jim and do an interlocal agreement between the county and the city of Health Centers. I said, I don't think there'll be a problem, but we need to put it through the court and then they can, we can take the machine over there and they can use it to fix the windmill in Health Center.
Okay.
That's, that, that's the highlight of all that.
Okay. And then our last item on the agenda today is Jesse.
I'll make a brief, like the Johnson Controls, so, you know, and I looked at all those bills and whether the price is right, I'm not really sure, but I will know that they're killing us on mileage for sure. And, and I looked at it closely and there's some, sometimes it's, that's just super high. But having said that, I called them to come winter ice the boiler and we set up an appointment for this past Tuesday, a couple of days ago. So we actually sent two guys in two different trucks and one came and worked.
Get more mileage at one.
One, one worked on the boiler and he knows the stuff, he's real good. The other guy came to look at the control panel and they both worked on it for quite a few hours doing their job. The boiler's ready, when, when the weather gets cold, he's going to come on and it's going to work perfect. Except for the fact that the control panel has some issues with it. They replaced one part, then he showed me, and I'll, I have pictures for y'all on Monday. He showed me nine different other little fuses. He said, we really should replace those. They replaced one and I believe they're about $150 each, so there might be some cost involved. The other thing he found was a compressor, you know, we have two compressors down there. One of them's gone bad. It's just locked up. So he says, hey, you need it to get, need to get that replaced. And he gave me a quote because I asked for one right away and if y'all will pass that, that's just free information, y'all, we can, y'all can decide Monday. And that's $2,000, that was for $2,519 to replace the compressor head on the compressor. If we buy the whole compressor, it's going to, you know, that's one for each, a copy for each one there. And then here's the second one is for the entire compressor is $5,021, so we'll.
Just so you'll know, I'm looking at bills that Melinda has printed off for me. They charge $1.84 per mile. And so for a 70-mile trip from Lubbock to here and back to Lubbock is $128.90.
And then they got to send two.
And then if they send more than that. On the $5,000 bill that they had in here, the mileage was 535 miles and that bill was $984.
No, this is the second. Yeah, there's another one.
They, it's judged what they, and they told me this Tuesday, they said, we've been sending whoever we can find and sometimes they come out of Amarillo and sometimes they'll come twice out of Amarillo or Lubbock. So he said, Tom, the supervisor has told them that they're going to try to be more consistent and just have two guys that will service us most of the time and it could change. And so they're trying real hard, but sometimes it might be a little too, too little, too late.
Well, I just don't feel like we've got what we was promised when they made their present, they, they, before you was here, Jesse, when they came, made their presentation, as you remember.
Yes, sir.
There was some of this stuff, I felt like, not all of it, of course, but some of it should have been included in their contract and I hadn't seen anything that they covered. They, you know, they billed us for every time they come.
So when they came Tuesday on, that was on the maintenance contract, I will monitor that when we get the invoice to see if they charge us for anything on Tuesday. Now, one last thing on Johnson Controls from my side, from my end, is that's the bid for the, for the air compressor. So having said that, since Quality Air is going to, well, to y'all decide who, who, who we use, I think if y'all will allow, I'll, I'll call Larry and say, hey, what about this air compressor? Can you replace it? And I can get a second bid if that's what y'all wish.
That'd be great. And I, I like the idea of whenever we can to use these local guys and so that'd be great.
Yes, yeah. We want to use the local guys. The problem we've run into in the past with the local guys is they're just like everyone else, they're limited on personnel and, you know, not so much in the winter, but well, it is when we have big coats though, you know, they're, they're stretched thin. And same in the summer. The other issue is the system is somewhat controlled by computer and so we need to talk to Larry and, or whoever we're going to use locally and see if they're familiar with that and would be able to, to assist us with that too. Because the way those thermostats and stuff are controlled are all through the computer. And so like I say, and we can operate them on a day-to-day basis, but when we have issues with them is when we have to holler at somebody.
Well, I think with the system we have, Judge, we're going to have issues.
Oh, yeah.
It's an old system.
We're going to have, we're going to have issues. We're, we're looking in, our committee's looking in to see maybe if our HVAC system may not fall under some of this rescue money.
I'm hoping it does.
And that we could replace the whole thing. And so, but like I say, as long as we have this system with those boiler units and those chillers and stuff, we're going to have lots of issues.
That is correct, yes. And the last thing I want to mention to y'all that we'll bring up Monday is the Justice Center lights. I've talked about that a couple of weeks ago, the parking lot lights and then all the other lights on the patios and the porches and all that and the dock lights. So one electric company gave me a bid for $9,475. That's going all LED. Of course, they'll need a bucket truck to get to those parking lot lights. The others are just putting the housing unit in, on the porch, I guess, patios. So I had asked them for the regular light bulbs too and they said, oh, we forgot, so we're going to do that. But if we go all LED, which in the long run would save us a lot of money, but that's, y'all's call, $9,475. I went ahead and contacted another electric company and they looked at it, talked to them this morning, they, they just got their number. them this morning, they, they just got their numbers in this morning or yesterday, and by late this afternoon, they'll have, they'll have an amount that I'll present both of y'all, all of y'all Monday.
All right.
Okay, again, for the record, where, have we got the money to cover that over there?
I don't have the money. We don't have any permanent improvement money left over there, but we have it in a long time. I mean, we've been dipping into the fund where it's everybody's permanent improvement or something. I don't know the number, but...
I'll say this much, it's definitely a safety issue over there for, because we need lights for the employees coming out. If we don't have the money, perhaps y'all would think about at least the parking lot lights.
The biggest issue we're going to have with parking lot, of course, we time change this Sunday. So, you know, it'll start getting dark close to 5:00 or 5:30, 6 o'clock, and the extension agency over there, they have lots of 4H events, they have lots of traffic from those 4H students in and out of the building.
Correct.
In the evening, you know, because of schoolwork, they have to do lots of that after hours. So like I say, if nothing else, we need to try to find the money where we could at least do the parking situation.
Well, those lights have needed repair for quite a while.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, and then that concludes today's agenda, so let's look at Monday's and see what changes we might have. Let's see. I'll let Melinda, I will let her wait and talk about her computer that she has on the Let's see. A cooperative agreement between Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Agency in Hell County, that is a, an item I got from Michael Clausen, and we'll discuss that on, on Monday. And basically, it's just a cooperative agreement between Hell County and Texas AgriLife. And so just basically, the services that they provide to us, it has nothing to do with the, I guess, the, there's no monetary meaning, it just, I'm assuming we have to have an agreement with them approved ever so often, and it's time for us to, to do that. The next item I had was I received a letter from the Texas Department of Transportation in regards to the materials that they allot to us from TexDOT, and I got a letter from them and said that the amount allotted to Hell County for the fiscal year of 2022 is And so...
It's usually around 23, 24 thousand dollars.
Okay. I have to submit, if the court approves it, then I have to submit a letter in writing within 45 days to TexDOT, telling them we want the materials or, or whatever, so.
Send them a letter, tell them you want the check back.
And then I have a couple of properties that I received from the city of Abernathy that they want to sell. And then Latrice has an item on canvassing the election that we just had on November 2nd. Let's see here. The county attorney is going to talk to us more about the opioid settlement. I haven't talked to him, so I don't know anything about that, and, and he was gone today. So Jesse's got his items, and then he has 2M, 2M Communications for the Justice Center and Adult Probation. Is that, what's that one, Jesse? The 2M, 2M Communications?
Yes, now, to elaborate, I've got the eight contracts ready, signed, to be approved. And then we're going to talk about the, the no probation in the Justice Center. The panic buttons do not work because when the system changed from digital to, from analog to digital, they need to install an M2M, machine-to-machine communicator, and it's one of those sites. It'd be about $190 at each location, so then the panic buttons will, will work again.
Okay.
That's what that's referencing, Judge.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we've done that. Ollie Liner Center, Benny's on the agenda, and Melinda had talked to me about this yesterday to pre, the springs on the overhead doors at the Ollie Liner Center, they need to have the springs replaced, and the company that manufactures those and sells them wants a prepay. They, I guess, won't send the springs until you pay for the springs.
Who's he using to do it?
Uh, she didn't say, and Melinda has all the information.
I talked to Benny. Yeah, I talked to Benny on Wednesday, he was explaining that, and it's the, I guess it'd be the southeast door. And the, the springs are out on it, and he said, everything's on back order, that's why they're wanting the money upfront, because it, with COVID and everything else, it's like everything else is on back order.
A thou, $1,062.50.
And the guy that's actually doing it is Danny. He used to work for...
Okay. Well, he just said that, she said, it's, something needs court action because we don't prepay for anything, you know? If, if we receive it, we pay for it, and since this has to be prepaid, and I know we had a, we've had a hotel or item on a conference here in the last year where that hotel required the first night be prepaid.
And it's not coming into January.
Well, that's the thing, you prepay a lot of the stuff, and you don't know when you might get it. It's going to be two weeks or a year.
Yeah.
You know, that's the only thing I have a problem with, prepaying stuff.
And then like I say, I'll, I'll try to get back in touch with Evelyn and see if she'll be here. If she won't be here, I'll get the dates and make sure she's arranged all that through Benny for us to consider. And then, of course, we'll vote on the rocket deviation and Carla's item. So, all right, any, anything before we adjourn? All right, we're standing adjourned at 10:08. Y'all have a good weekend. Thank you for being here.